This conference will now be recorded.
I will call the regular council meeting of Monday, July 21st, 2025 to order.
Councilmember Curry?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
And Mayor Proton Walchek?
Here.
Please rise for the flag. I'm putting out jolly gifts to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people with gracious things, one nation under God, equal physical with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We approve the agenda as printed.
Motion to approve this printed?
Second. I'll insert a motion to approve second to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion?
Councilmember Curry?
Hi.
Councilmember Holliday?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Walchek?
Hi.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, any? Any problems, discussions, concerns about the minutes? Will stand as printed. With time for public comment, citizens appearing for council on an agenda and non-agenda agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed and all comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience.
Jiskiba 635 River Street. I have two cares and concerns. First was the opening of that road by Mishikus. I attended all the original meetings regarding the volleyball placement and there was, none of those had those volleyball courts going over that far. And that road was going to stay open up until just the last few months. That road needs to go back on the plan to be open. I go down there, I started taking pictures. There's, last time I was there, just about two weeks ago, handicap van, door open, people are pulling in, out and around, enjoying. People are going down at lunch, they're going down for ice creams, they're going down for dinner. There are people, there's probably hundreds down there throughout the day from morning till noon. There were two families swimming the one day I was there. That road needs to be open. I, I find that very troubling that you want to take that away from the citizens. And in the first three meetings, there was, that was never in any part of the plan. That was changed somehow, and I don't know why that took place. My other concern was the idea on Art on the Bay for closing that road for a temporary setup. The setup part was a good idea and the close down was a good idea, but not having it closed the entire time. I saw people, when I went and I went back there twice, when you come through, there was a van and elderly lady trying to get out with her walker, not handicap accessible, and I found that to be very disturbing. Another person with their wheelchair that couldn't get out and go to the close area where they were trying to go. And I feel that that road needs to be open. I agree for the drop off for the setup and the pickup, but just for a minute, minute time, a few hours here and there, and keep it back open for, you know, especially to keep ADA compliant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cynthia Mishinsky, your Alpena County Prosecutor, but also your Alpena City resident. And I'm here tonight because I did know that on the agenda is a presentation from the here on undercover narcotics team and their new lieutenant. And I just wanted to voice my excitement for the new developments through the Hunt team. Particularly as I make it, my job priorities to be in charge of prosecuting our drug cases here in our community. And we are facing some very strenuous times right now. And so to have the city's support of the team, I feel it in my job and I know that those involved in the criminal justice system do as well. And I think it's very fitting that today was the day that they are on this particular agenda, given that frankly, Mr. Pfeifer and myself just spent about an hour together in court this afternoon. And at least in the past, there had been the saying that drug crimes are victimless crimes. And I can tell you that anybody who's ever spouted that has never been to a sentencing for someone who had lost their life because of drug dealing. And that is, we just came from that and it was very emotional. Two families were very much torn apart and there was a room full of victims in there. So I think that any support that the city obviously continues to give to combating that and leading to less victimization here in our community due to drug dealing, drug usage and helping with addiction. I just really want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There's no one online, so I'm going to close public comment. And we have no public hearing. Consent agenda A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $2,577,481. And authorize Mayor Johnson and Court Sway to sign the word.
We approve the consent agenda amount of $2.5 million to $2,577,481.
Second. We have a motion by Danny on support by Colonel to allow the bills in an amount of $2,577,481. Authorize Mayor Johnson and Court Sway to sign the word. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Holliday?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walchek?
Hi.
And Councilmember, Councilmember Curry?
Hi.
So on presentations, we have the Hunt team and he's not here yet, so I'm going to.
You are.
Okay, welcome. So you're up, are you ready? So we have, I'm here on undercover narcotics team 2024 annual report and we have Lieutenant Ray Roletz. To present.
Welcome. Ran up the steps to make sure I wasn't tardy. I had a quick drive from Gaylord over here and there was traffic on 32. I am the new lieutenant for the Hunt team that also covers Sane, so basically from Petoskey all the way to Alpena. I've been here about, I'd say a little over a month and a half. I know I'm presenting the 2024 annual report. I believe you guys all have seen a copy of that. I am prepared to answer questions about that report or anything you'd like to hear about it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to just give a brief, the highlights, maybe hit the highlights?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't want to characterize them as lowlights, but last year, the staffing was at critical levels. There were several retirements. Lieutenant Stu Sharp retired. Several members of the team rotated out at a certain point. They were down to just two members. With that, you'll see, they still did do 53 drug investigations. I'm just flipping through my notes here real quick. Which is down for previous years. Forty, forty-seven percent of the activity was within the city limits of Alpena. Think you'll continue to see that a lot of investigations do occur here based on the population size compared to the other areas of our operation here. In talking with the sergeants, even though personnel numbers were down to at one point, two people, they continue to be active in arrests. And that includes 73 arrests on 85 counts with a very small team. I'm going to move on to the drug seized. I can tell you that those numbers are low and I can tell you that with them being here in a month and a half, we have already doubled 2024's numbers in just a month and a half of working here. I'm not saying that that's just me. I'm saying that's a concerted effort as well as a contribution of a detective from the city of Alpena. We've got four detectives, a sergeant and myself, also working on a fifth one because there is a drug problem and not just this city, but this area. Methamphetamine specifically is the main thing, followed by fentanyl. We are going to continue to target that aggressively. So that's the, I was not here for 202024, but that is a brief overview. With a promise from me, you're going to see some really good work coming out of these detectives, a large amount of that in your city.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So you mentioned Alpena and you said this area, can you tell me what area, what are you referring to?
Sorry, the four county area of our operation. The population density in Alpena is obviously much larger than the surrounding counties that we cover, which results in about half of the work that we do being conducted directly in your city limits.
Okay. And my second question is, you've had more drug seizures, that's what you said, seizures. Is that because we have more people working or because there's more of a problem?
In your area specifically?
Just in what you just said a little bit ago, we, you've had more seizures and in addition to that, you have more people working?
Yes, so I guess I'll back it up just a little bit. I've supervised a number of teams across the state from Metro Detroit area, most recently the sting area of operation, which is six counties to our south, and now here. When you have the proper number, level of staffing, just like at any proactive job period, you're able to get the job done more efficiently and properly. So now that we have the right amount of detectives and I think a little bit different direction and perspective that I'm bringing with my experience, you're going to see good results. Good results for us typically result in good results for the community.
There's not more drugs, you just have more people to do the job and it's being more efficacious, I'm guessing.
It would be early for me to say that because Alpena is a good target for source cities to try to push drugs up here because the further you are away from source cities, the more you're able to, I guess, on street terms, double your money. So having a proactive team up here is a deterrent to that. Otherwise, otherwise, there could be a large open air drug market.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you kind of just explain the process of how Hunt works as opposed to, you know, the regular police station? You know, how it's affected?
Yes, without giving away too many of our tactics in a public meeting. Yes, we'd be very.
We don't need the sauce.
Yeah. What you have is a team of detectives from different departments that have intimate knowledge of their own areas and bring different expertises. So it's a force multiplier, number one, you have four detectives, a sergeant and lieutenant that can help any entity in our, in our four county area with criminal investigations. Not just narcotics, but if there's breaking and enterings, larcenies from vehicles, other pattern crimes. Most recently, there's been some money courier scams targeting the elderly in the community, which we helped out with. Number two is the resources that state police bring. Any contributing departments has the full access to all our resources to help with investigations. Because we are a plainclothes unit, and again, I tread carefully here because it's a public meeting, there are certain things that we can do and operate that people can't do in a patrol car. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. I know how broad Hunt is. It's not specifically for narcotics all the time.
Correct.
So it's nice to know how you help out the city, you know, in many other ways than people might realize.
Yes, and a brief example of this, there is a scam going around the state of Michigan right now where there's organized crime. Specifically, this one was from an India group of actors. They target elderly people using spoof phone numbers, making it seem actually that, in this specific case, it made it seem that the Alpena City Police was calling to let an elderly lady know, hey, you need to take your money out of the bank. We're going to send an FBI agent to your house to get it and we're going to keep it safe for you. She fell for it for the, to the tune of, I believe it was about 50,000 the first time. Round two, we got involved, set up surveillance. When they came to collect the money, we put the guy, took the guy down and he is in jail, going through the criminal justice program right now. So that wasn't necessarily narcotics related, but just something we, we want to help out with. Yes.
We thank you for coming and we thank you for what you do for the community.
Thank you for your guys' support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the Hunt's annual report. Assembly?
Second.
Mayor Proton? Motion to receive Hunt's 2024 annual report, seconded by Holliday. Any questions?
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walchek?
Hi.
Councilmember Curry?
Hi.
Councilmember Holliday?
Hi.
And next, on your presentations, we have the employee of the quarter, Kathy Hines, our human resource director.
Okay, we're going to do things just a little bit different this time. So our crew, several members of our crew are here today. We're going to have them come up individually. Shannon Smolinski is the division head and she brought her team with you, so come on up, Shannon, the guys are going to follow you. Donovan Smolinski is our fleet manager. Our leader is Tim Hepburn, technician one. Greg Noat, Kelly started with us as an intern, go right up there. Kelly started with us as an intern, she did a fantastic job and we brought Kelly Watson on. Matt Robel, he is our mechanic. And Austin is newer with the group, but he is working out well and is Austin Bailey. So, in April, northeast Michigan endured something in which we were not completely prepared. The ice storm 2025 brought our community together to help one another and dig deep to bring the community back to its full beauty. It also showed our community what an exceptional group of employees the city has. Employees remain positive, their attitudes were encouraging, they rallied around one another when the going got tough. They were efficient and they showed their dedication to the city and this community. Each quarter, we take the opportunity to recognize an individual whose contributions truly stand out. This recognition, recognition is a way to celebrate their outstanding achievement and commitment to the city's mission and values. This quarter, we do not have one individual, we have an entire group. Since this program's inception, we received nominations from all of the different departments, but this is the first time we received a nomination from a member of our community. So I am going to actually ask our nominator, Don LeBar, to come up and read the nomination so that everyone can hear what Don can say and then we'll present the certificate.
Awesome. Well, I mostly did this just to see Shannon up in front squirming a little bit. Oh, most of you probably know, maybe know who I am. I'm Ann Gentry's husband, so I have a little bit of a, how most people introduce me, so I'm getting used to it these days. But I know how much the city here takes pride in their community and I've really seen such an amazing shift in my lens in the seven plus years I've lived here in Alpena. And I thought it was time to really honor the DPW team here because I really think y'all, during the ice storm, everyone kept saying, oh, you got to buy the utility lineman a beer or lunch. I was like, they're getting paid overtime, you should buy the DPW people dinner and lunch and a drink. And so I found out that I could nominate as a citizen, not only a single person, but also a team as well. So I'll read my letter, which is not as eloquent as what Kathy just said, but Shannon Smolinski and her dedicated team at DPW have gone above and beyond with their unwavering can-do attitude, playing a vital role in making the Alpena Flower Festival a true success. This past year brought numerous challenges, but under Shannon's strong leadership, the term, the team, I've been on a boat since 8:00 AM, so I'm a little tired. The team persevered with determination and pride in their essential work to this community. Though often behind the scenes, their tireless efforts, whether it's cleaning up after ice storms, supporting community events or managing key capital projects have been instrumental in keeping Alpena moving forward. And I just want to say thank you to you all for what you do for this community.
The certificate, we'll have Cindy then come and maybe take a picture with you as well, since you're prepared. The city of Alpena would like to thank you for your hard work and dedication as well as your consistent willingness to go above and beyond your duties. Your unwavering can-do attitude is the reason for your continued success. Your tireless effort during the ice storm and preparing for the Alpena Flower Fest are truly indications of your commitment to our community. Your positive working relationships, dedication to work ethics and motivation makes our community better. You are an inspiration to council members, our department heads and the entire team at the city of Alpena. Congratulations on your success and all you set out to achieve. So Cindy? Here's this, and we'll get Don up there as well. I'll get that out of your hands, you can hold that, right? Again?
Now we're down to Target of Alpena, we've got Mike Mallor, Director of Economic Development. He's up. Hi, Mike.
So, good evening, Mike Mallor, Economic Development Director at Target. So props to Hunt for their great work and DPW, tough act to follow here, so great that the department was acknowledged. I mean, so I wrote my report, you've all probably, I hope you all have read my report and I'm not going to read through it. I brought Lenny with me today, he's going to talk a little bit about the housing piece, but I was going to skip over the ice storm in my report, but now having just seen the DPW folks up here being acknowledged for their great work. Obviously, we had an ice storm and it did have an effect on our area. Unfortunately, we target aggregated kind of the data and the impact on small businesses with the idea that maybe if we presented this information up to the state, maybe we could find some relief for them by being the aggregators of the data. And we did, and it wasn't just for Alpena, we did it for the multiple counties, five counties that we serve under one of our grants. And so unfortunately, it didn't do a whole lot to help bring relief to this area. But I'm not aware of any businesses that failed as a result of the ice storm, but certainly many were harmed. You know, I heard that over and over again. Just one other reminder about Target, so you know, for many years, Target was a one-person entity and as of today, we're six. And so our mission continues to grow in the name of helping support this area and our work. So with that, I'll maybe just jump into a DPI. I know y'all know what's going on there. Asbestos abatement is underway, soon there'll be demolishing buildings over there. And I've been in the call with the mayor and with, I think, Montiel and Rachel, and they're promising that once they kind of start with the demolition, 18 months, they'll be ready to go. I haven't heard them deviate from that, so let's hope that in fact, that does come about. And they did express in the last call I was involved with them, that they do already have some folks reaching out to them with some interest. Of course, so it rains to be seen if that interest is real or not, but it's nice to know that there's people out there looking at this as a potential development site. It's kind of funny, Don LeBar mentioning he's Ann's husband. And the DDA grants here, Ann's done a great job and so she and I collaborated a great deal together. And so I want to at least acknowledge just some of the things that are going on in the DDA. So Target has made the space available for the kiosks, the sort of pop-up market, Water Street Commons. And so far, the, I think their returns have been good. I mean, I've been over there a lot to meet with the vendors and they all seem to be really happy. I've had some great, I turned a corner one day to go over there, over there just to kind of walk and talk to everybody. And as I turned the corner, I had to drive two blocks and park in the city hall parking lot to get, find parking. How amazing was that? As a matter of fact, just, I'm sorry, I'm deviating a little bit here, but it was so wonderful. I went over to see Ken Abbe's, they'd opened, I went in there, popped in there, just see how things are going for them, it was their first day. And the owner, Scott Cromer, was not available, so I ended up waiting, they'll kill the old time, maybe he'll come back. And so I went over to the railing where the river is and all of a sudden, the bridge alarm started and freeze in the bridge was going to go up. And two ladies sat down alongside me and they both had social district cups, they had hard ciders from Ken Abbe's. And I looked at them, I said, oh, you guys don't know how much it makes, how much it makes me happy to see you with these cups there. And she says, well, do you have anything to do with this? I said, I do, a little bit, I'm involved with the DDA. And, and they were from, one was from California, she's from LA. And her friend was from Iowa and they're like, we've been coming back here, we see these improvements. It's just great to have outsiders verify what we all, I'm biased, right? I think it's doing, things are going great here. Just nice to have outsiders remind you of that too. So when the season's over with the market folks, we'll sit down with all them, talk about lessons learned, what went right, what went wrong? Maybe what we should, should we consider doing differently for the following year? Should we add more kiosks? If so, should they be the bigger ones or smaller ones and a lot of things? So we're going to, we're going to collect data this year and then use it to inform decisions with respect to next season. Also staying within the, staying within the DDA, I did mention Ann did secure $831,000 in grants for facades. Some of those will be right here in our downtown again. So that's $1.2 million she's been able to bring to improve the exterior appearance of the buildings in our DDA district, which now goes all the way to the river. So I'm going to say $831,000 is going to be at the river at the HPC Credit Union. So I'm so grateful that we're able to finally get that boundary expanded because I think we're bringing some of the good things that are happening downtown further up this corridor, which I think is important for the long-term good of the community. No updates on the state theater, except we all know the marquee came down. And so by, at least we know there's some progress going on there. I will touch on the former Huntington branch, Thunder Bay Community Health is going in there to move their corporate administrative offices downtown. And then the Bay Athletic Club, of course, as you all know, most of you are probably aware, is going to be taken up by the majority of that building. And it's just great on so many fronts, right? We're going to have a place for a thousand people who work downtown, have a place to go exercise at lunch, which we didn't have before. That's pretty outstanding. We're going to take a building on a marquee corner that looks pretty tired and we're going to beautify it, that's pretty outstanding. And then we're going to have a whole bunch more people traveling into our downtown every day to exercise because there's a big membership base there. So it's a, it's a win on so many fronts, so just really grateful to see that finally moving forward here. City property north of town, just real briefly, the Gardens of Alpena folks, I'm going to reserve any comments for them because they're going to be at, maybe the next meeting to give them, give you guys an update in person. But we did hear on a call we had with them last week, they're going to start tree clearing here pretty soon. You know, I guess so, but they'll report more on that when they're here next, next month. The Corridor Improvement Authority did meet to look at the draft development agreement between that developer and the Corridor Improvement Authority that was formed, and so that's in process right now. And then I did arrange a meeting with the city staff, Steve and Shannon and Montiel and Rachel to, the housing developer, look at property out there. They seem to have interest and so hopefully more to come on that here soon. Jumping to the south end of town, Pace is a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly and they took over 17,000 square feet in the old Peebles Shopping Store. I got a tour of it in May, it's beautiful, it's great in there, really is. So now we're going to have some, some automobile traffic in that parking lot. So let's hope maybe there'll be some peripheral businesses that will maybe take up some of that vacant space alongside of them. But there is a 90-day waiting period after the federal inspection was completed before they can open, so it's set to open in August. As I said, it looks great. Out in M32, the branding fueling site that was going to go in at the airport road and M32 is now moving forward. You may, if you drive out that way, you see some piles of dirt out there now. Idea is get the site work done this fall and get the, I'm getting ready for construction in the springtime. So glad to see that moving forward here as well. Just kind of jumping around here. I guess, everything's not always, you know, sunshine and rainbows. One of the things that I pointed out in here, kind of the headwinds is NOAA. The impact on their budget as a result of the federal budget is not good and we have no idea what the peripheral effect of that will be. But I know like Silent Swarm is here with 500 people for two weeks because of a lot of the work that NOAA does. And so I think anything we could do to bring attention to that situation. You know, they do a great work there and they're a big driver in this community. I just want to want to see that, I don't want to see that facility wither and I don't want to see the staff go away. So I'm not sure what we can do, except let our legislators know how much maybe they're missing the vote on that one because I think it's important we fund them. I just, I just, I had a note here that I was, I wanted to point out today that, you know, so much of what we do, there's no guarantees, right? Some of these projects take so long. The runways are so long, and so many things could enter, could happen. And so it's really frustrating for me to come up here and tell you all about all these great things that are going to happen. And then they just don't seem to happen fast enough, or they don't happen at all. And just rest assured that it's not through lack of effort. It just, you know, projects that are big are complicated. Banks and tariffs and health and all kinds of things get in the way. So anyway, but that doesn't change our mission to try to make those things come together as quickly as possible. Among my main priorities for the remainder of the year, supporting the cleanup and the eventual redevelopment of the DPI site. These are my personal, my personal goals. Working with the Alpena Gardens project, helping move forward and see some level of construction sort of beginning before year end. Working on the formation of a housing subsidiary in the subsequent startup, which Lenny is going to talk about here, something exciting that we're working on at Target. Work on securing long-term funding for our small business hub. We established a hub. We get this grant funded that expires in September of 2026. We want, we want that programming to live on. We're doing good work in Alpena and all the counties that we're serving under this program. We don't want it to go away when the funds dry up. So we're working hard to figure out how we keep those funds flowing and keep these people here in place and do this work. And then lastly, evaluate the Water Street Commons and the plans and next steps for that next spring. And then I guess that that I will stop and just open up for questions.
Yeah, I was looking at a lot of places. When is the casino coming in over at the DPI site?
Had that in the seven-story condos?
Sure of that.
Yeah, not soon enough. Yeah, good question, Danny. Harold, do you have a question?
Yeah, I almost forgot it because of Danny. Curious what happens to the kiosks over the winter months. Are they stored somewhere?
We're going to leave them there.
Okay.
Leave them there. Yeah, so the kiosks, I hope you all agree that they look nice and attractive. And the feedback I've had has been really positive. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is look like a Home Depot parking lot by setting a bunch of sheds up. And I think we achieved something that met our expectations here. But the plan is to leave them in place. They'll close up presumably at the end of the year, but we're already hearing from one of the vendors that they want to stay open. So I guess we haven't really decided how we're going to handle that yet. But I, you know, if they want to man it, and I don't know why we would stop. They give them means to heat it. And we got electricity and lights inside of all of them. A lot of them running air conditioners right now, so getting it cool in there. So it remains to be seen, but their intent is to leave them on site for now. I think we have more food trucks there. We got two fifty amp, you know, plugs there for food trucks. And problem is, a lot of them are already booked out when the season began. So we couldn't get, you know, we've had a few there, but we'd like to have a lot more there, you know, next, next spring. Kevin, did you have a question?
I love the diversity you can kind of put up in that small space with those things.
Agreed.
You know, we, that project kind of came about because of the, I think either a project fell through or there was no interest in property. Are we still thinking about, is that property on sale? Are we?
So, yeah, I'm glad, yeah, I was, it was something I was going to, I was going to point out in here. So we, Target owns that property. The organization I work for, we own that land. And we had a project we worked on for eighteen months. Just finally, like, after eighteen months of a lot of focused energy and effort, it wasn't moving forward. So literally, I had a conversation with Ann Gentry in December after we decided that project was done and said, you know, maybe we should consider a kiosk. What do you think? You know, we're not inventing something that hasn't been done elsewhere in the state. So it's not like we're super smart. Just let's figure out what Muskegon did, what Grand Rapids does. Let's see if we can replicate it up here. So we just started gathering data, sharing it with Rachel, sharing it with our DDA board, our Economic Development Committee. And I'm pretty happy to say that from a conversation in December to May, we had sheds on site. I mean, things went pretty fast. Great support from the city, great support from Shannon to make sure they got the site ready for us. I mean, everything worked really well together. And the good news is, is that it does not block the development of that site. So the way we structured the agreement with the DDA, we're leasing the space to them. First year, we're giving it to them for free to kind of proof-of-concept opportunity. But what the situation is, is if someone does come along, we spent a lot of money to do that. If someone comes along and says, I want to put a five-story hotel there with a restaurant and some other stuff on the lower level, we would not want that project to not be allowed to move forward. And so the way we structured the agreement was, is that we have language in the purchase agreement, it's in the lease, that if somebody wants to develop that site, they have to make whole the DDA for any funds that they committed to kind of fix costs outside of the sheds. Because the sheds, they could repurpose. We could put them in the City Hall parking lot. We could probably find other locations for them. But the things like electrical and the site prop, those, we spent, you know, we spent money on those things, and the DDA needs to be able to recover that. And so the idea being that those would not be an impediment to a project. If someone's going to put something on that site, forty thousand bucks to pay off the DDA for the fixed portion of that project will be negligible to the deal impact. So it's kind of a, it preserves our opportunity there, but it also gives it, it gives us a chance to activate an otherwise dead space that was doing nothing economically for the community. Now we got businesses testing out kind of as an incubator, which is something we were lacking here in this town. So it just, it checks a lot of boxes, you know. So to answer your question, yeah, it's, would not block, would not block the potential development of that site for the right project. We just have to make sure we vet it really thoroughly, right? Before we ever announce to the DDA, you have to move your kiosk. So, but yeah, we didn't want to lock ourselves into a corner we couldn't get out of though with that arrangement, so. Anything else?
I would just like to thank you and your team for everything that we do. And I'd also like to reiterate what you said about NOAA and anyone out there who knows what NOAA does for our community and what an asset it is. Please contact your public officials and let them know that we need, we need their support to keep NOAA here because it's important.
Yeah. And last thing I'll say before I yield to Lenny is just, thank you. You just renewed the contract with Target. We have a great relationship, love work one city. Absolutely mean that in my heart of hearts. And so I appreciate your support of our ability to do this work. So thank you for that, okay?
We appreciate it.
Thank you, too. Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Lenny.
Thank you.
I'm going to be brief. Afternoon, good night. I don't know what we're going to do here, but thank you, guys, for allowing me to talk a little bit about housing. First and foremost, I want to thank you, guys, for, you know, your contribution to what we're doing here at Target. You guys did increase your contribution, allowed me to have a job two and a half years ago. And I hope, you know, with the millions of dollars that we were able to put into the city's coffers, especially some of the projects at Culligan Plaza. I really don't like to brag. I really don't. I don't. I mean, you know, and I'm being, I'm being serious and not facetious here, but a lot of the things that we don't really talk about, and we don't pat ourselves on the back, we just get behind a computer and work. You should see, I look like I'm in a space station with the amount of commuter monitors and reading NOFA's and seeing what we can possibly do to bring additional grant dollars here to our community. I still want to bring an EV truck for our fire station, but, you know, you know, things change. As far as, as far as we're related to housing, I want you, guys, to understand that housing and economic development are very closely tied together. More people means more money and more talent into your community and more opportunities. So with that said, Target has developed a new internal initiative that we're going to be launching here in the next few months and kicking off in the next fiscal year, where we're going to develop the Lake Huron Regional Development Corporation. And what that is, is going to be a wing underneath Target that's going to be focusing on development, primarily workforce development. But probably, we really want to hit all types of housing because we want to hit all areas that can help economic growth. We want to see teachers and police officers be able to have housing. You know, we know that our target, our target market is be houses between two hundred and twenty-eight thousand to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So that's our sweet spot, you know, for housing in our area. We do know that our housing currently here in Alpena is older than the Nixon administration. So we want to upgrade some of these things, allow some of our seniors to age in place. That takes a little bit for some of those resources. So seniors who are looking to downsize. So these are the things that we're looking at doing. Through a lot of advocacy with the state, a lot of pushing with the state, we were able to secure grant dollars to start this particular program. Hopefully, we'll be signing some grant agreements, and we'll start with the initial influx of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of investments to start this particular initiative. And we're going to start this right here in our own hometown because what better way to do this? And you, guys, have an amazing team to really work for. I love working with Rachel and Montiel and Steve and others because they, they, when I first got here, they gave me a five-hundred-page binder. And it was like, hey, there's some light reading. These are all the things that we ever want to do, find a grant for them. So I'm still working off some of that stuff. I'm glad you, guys, haven't, haven't, you know, changed that because I kind of got a rhythm now. So we're, we're looking at doing some rehab, rehab projects in partnership with your, with your team here. And what that's going to do is going to be targeting individuals within your community to help. We've already did a rehab program. We had, we helped about twenty-one participants, and I want to say more than eleven or twelve are Alpena residents. And this is zero cost to the resident. They just need to qualify. Most of them either were between sixty percent of area median income, meaning that they were fixed income participants. There were homeowners, okay? So that means they're homeowners, they're U.S. citizens, they live in your community. And we've, we've even thought of things like bathroom remodels, new roofs, ramps on a particular home. One gentleman's, a fire escape plan was to wheel himself and throw himself out of the back door. We were able to install a brand-new ramp wrap around his house and extend his porch so now he can get to his wood. So these are the things that we were able to do that may not have been on Target's radar, but now it's, it's on our radar, and it helps our community. So those are the things that we're looking at. We're looking at other grant options. Grants are going to shift because of the current climate. And we're going to be navigating some of those different shifts and different priorities. So know that we're working as hard as we possibly can to put your, your interests first, and we enjoy doing what we do. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. My report's also attached to his on the back. Under five minutes, I don't talk them.
Well done.
Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate it. To entertain a motion to receive and file Target's report.
I'll move to receive and file with Target report. Second.
So Councilwoman Bridget Hollins had moved to receive and file, supported by Mayor Proton. Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walton?
Hi.
Councilmember Kerrier?
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinson?
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson?
Hi. So now we're down to announcements. And the city is still seeking individual to fill a vacancy in the local officers' compensation committee for a six-year term. So if everyone's interested, please let us know. We're down to reports of officers, boards, and committees. And we are on A, a second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash five-ten, which amends chapter one oh-two vegetation. And I'm going to turn this over to Bill Pfeiffer, City Attorney.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless one of you wants me to read it.
Just kidding.
You know, Montiel made a couple of changes that we proposed last time or that council talked about last time. So I think it's ready to go. It just needs a motion and then a vote.
Well, we approve ordinance twenty-five dash five-ten.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Danny Mitchell and in support by Councilwoman Bridget Hollins had to support or pass ordinance number twenty-five dash five-ten, which amends chapter one oh-two vegetation. Discussion?
Mayor Proton Walton?
Hi.
Councilmember Kerrier?
Hi.
Councilmember Hollinson?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Motion for you.
And B, now is a second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash five-eleven, which amends chapter ten on animals. And once again, Bill.
Once again, consistent with council policy, this would not be read unless any of the individual members requesting. Montiel did make a couple of changes again in the no-dead test hearing. So we just need to propose a motion and a vote.
Just, I just have one. No, and you tell me. So Chief Hamp had sent an email, and he wanted to know before somebody can get ticketed again. And it wasn't at that time dash, uh, ten dash thirty-five B, which we don't have anymore. But it's the end of the, it's the end of the document. Let me get there. Wanted to know, does somebody have to be found guilty before misdemeanor applies? So does it have to be adjudicated before they can? Because it's not clear.
Didn't have, yes.
So should we add that?
It's just similar to any, any criminal charge. So if I got a drunk driving this Friday, and I got one next Friday, it would not be a second offense because I had not been convicted of this Friday's drunk driving before I got next Friday's drunk driving. So if they get ticketed on this Friday, and then we want to give them a ticket next Friday, it would still be a civil infraction unless that first ticket had been adjudicated. So they would have to get them found responsible on the first ticket before we do that.
Does that information need to be iterated in this document? Or is it part of some other document?
I think it, Eric wanted to make sure that these guys knew how to write it. It was a second.
Yeah, that was my concern as well because if it's a violation and not adjudicated, we're probably responsible by the court. It would still be the first offense.
That's correct. That's the way through. If you wanted to change that, we can change that. But generally, whenever you have enhanced penalty for a second or subsequent offense, you have to have that, that adjudication on the first one before you can do that.
Chief Hamp?
Just to be, just so it was clear, it was a misdemeanor always before. So I think the reason we wanted to change this is because the thought that some folks didn't need to be hit with a misdemeanor for their dog accidentally getting out, so to speak. Then for the eventual person, like your dog, our dog gets away out of time, that it's probably a misdemeanor for them. But as currently written, that second offense could not, could not be a misdemeanor unless they were adjudicated on the first one.
Does that, Chief Hamp, does that?
Yeah. Comes and builds, you know what's a little bit more difficult? When it's a nine-day misdemeanor? Because when the officer runs a criminal history, it's not going to show that conviction. It's not a misdemeanor, not on a criminal history. So that's something we need to work out, Bill. But I had a little bit of concern as to how an officer would know that's a second or fourth violation. It's not showing any criminal history. That's a, you know, regional evidence in our offices as well.
So is it more of a procedural thing and doesn't necessarily need to be in the ordinance?
I think we should probably develop a memo for, for the guys so that they can, you know, the way it should be forced. But that is absolutely correct. But it's not going to show up. But they're not necessarily going to know it's a second unless they wrote the one.
I would agree that I think it's something that we can work out between our offices as opposed to having to go through the ordinance.
Ready for a motion? Does anyone have, do you have one to do?
Yeah, we spoke about the venomous thing.
And I was wondering, uh, what if uh anyone currently has them in their home and this passes? How would that work?
I don't believe there's anyone grandfathered in current.
Right.
Which type of?
Uh, it was the uh, the venomous animals, uh reptiles, insects. I'm thinking more along lines like tarantulas, little, little bit of pythons.
Yeah, you know, I, I think Sergeant Goel spoke to this and that is you know, Eric's staff isn't out looking for snakes and venomous animals inside home. So it's, it's usually only going to hurt, I believe, the head with insects in problem. Uh, and most of those come by way of uh when they're in the home for something else to begin with. And then they recognize the occasion, so.
I mean, would any issue arise, are planning a complete blanket prohibition on these things as opposed to worrying about when, you know, they come into the house or labeling the house as such?
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's not, it's not an enforcement tool that uh, that we're going to be going door to door to check whether somebody's got an animal that meets one of those ones that definition.
Well, i- if this passes, I'm curious if a normal house check is just made on someone and they're, you know, this is the best possible scenario or the most, you know, complicated scenario. Uh, they're aficionados for, you know, spiders and they have a bunch of tarantulas that are not legal now in the city. Police aren't even there for that issue, but they see them. What happens?
Yeah, I would tell you from my perspective, I believe that we would use it as education and material to understand the ordinance and that let them know that they can't have those animals. Because the other problem becomes now, what do we do with those documents? That really don't want to hose them to my office.
No, and that, that's why I'm curious is this, is this a seizure thing now?
So I mean, we'd take some coordination at our end, make determination of how we're going to be careful of animals. And so a coordinated determination is what going to happen. That's the reality of it. I mean, it's unfortunately not a simple solution.
No, no, I'm just wondering if someone is that aficionado, if there's any, there's no grandfathering in it. I'm just wondering if there will be more issues of this. It's, it's just, I've, I've ran into more people that, not in Alpena, but uh more people than I would probably realize have these in their home. Yes, uh, one person went to school with a mini python in his sweatshirt for two years. So, yeah, um, like this, this happens. I'm just curious if uh, if it's going to be more of an issue when we find these, you know, spiders and we're like, how, how are we going to house them? Now, there may be none, but I've also seen little, you know, those gerbil, little tubes that, you know, people made for gerbils. They have those on the walls for tarantulas. Yeah, cool. Cool. So it's, it's, it's things that I do not live with. Um, I have family, so I have other dangerous things in my home. So I don't need to go with spiders. But I, I'm, for the people that do, I'm, I'm just curious if this would cause more of an issue, like we have to seize these spiders or, again, hoping this never happens. I'm just curious if the prohibition, would you think would ever, we'd ever run into those major issues?
Uh, it, it could happen, yeah. I mean, depending upon circumstance and uh, you know, if they came across somebody who had, you know, ten tarantulas that uh, it, it would be illegal for them to, to do that.
Again, going back, it's just making it legal, you don't see an issue with anything that could come of it.
I, I don't, I don't think, uh, as, as Chief Hamp pointed out, if there's a, a chance to educate, at least initially, that would be there. So I don't think they're going to be out looking for people to get tickets to for.
Never.
Yeah. But it's probably, yeah. If you vote to sit, it's probably going to happen tomorrow. Yeah, yeah.
Not that much.
But yeah, there's no, there's no guarantee that it wouldn't uh get enforced immediately. But I don't think there's going to be any acting.
I, I think it's also how it will be enforced kind of thing, like where would this, where would they go? Is there a system we have for any of that? We know how we're going to handle it. It's like we cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yeah, this, I'm just not thinking this stuff out here.
Yeah.
About how this could come uh come to fruition where it could be a problem even tomorrow. And that is if uh, if uh, if my minor son goes over to your house and got bit by a tarantula that had gotten out because you were in violations. That might cause me to make a complaint against you uh in terms of what happened. And that is probably something that would be enforced.
Yeah, but that's. The one happens with that spider.
Yeah. Now, if I, if, if an officer, I think, sort of, or inquiring about uh something unrelated to that uh and saw an aquarium with some uh, you know, a tarantula, I don't think they're going to immediately jump to uh, we're going to raise your ticket for that. Uh, but there certainly would educate them. I believe that, you know, those, those are no longer allowable to see. Um, person body going to say, I didn't know that. Whether to get rid of them or not, I guess. Like I said, we're not going to be knocking on doors, making people get rid of them.
Doesn't affect, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Also, can we?
Oh, no, I just said thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's fine. Thank you.
I move that we adopt order, ordinance number 25 dash 510, which amends chapter 10 in.
511?
511, which amends chapter 10 in, under animals.
Yes.
Second? Sure. My, my.
Um, Mayor Proton made the motion to adopt ordinance number 25 dash 511, which amends chapter 10 under animals and is supported by councilwoman, councilwoman Bridget Hollins. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Carrier?
I'm going to name this one. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Councilmember Hollinson?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Walchek?
Hi.
Free.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're down to see an appointment of a voting delegate and alternative to cast the vote at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention from September 17th, 2025.
I, I just a quick question. Where is the convention being held? Does anyone know? In Rapids. And I know Danny, you were the delegate, voting delegate last year and I was the, the alternate. Um, and I just, I spoke with Rachel this morning and said, I thought I'd throw my name in just because retired, I probably have a bit more time. But that isn't, doesn't mean I get to go whoever wants to go.
We should not trapped on the island.
It's true. Yeah, because being trapped on Mackinac Island.
And also my name is the alternate.
Okay.
So we have a, well, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion?
We don't have a motion. So someone want to make the motion?
It's going to be primary. Okay. I move that Carol be a designated as the primary, uh, what's it called?
Okay. Voting.
Voting delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting with Mayor Cindy Johnson as the alternate.
I'm a second.
Mitchell made a motion um to appoint Mayor Proton Carol Walchek as a voting delegate and Mayor Cindy Johnson as the alternate. Um, Kevin Carrier supported that, right? Any discussion?
Councilmember Allison?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Walchek?
Hi.
Councilmember Carrier?
Hi.
Motion free.
We're down to council committee reports. I'll start with Kevin Christie.
So we just heard a really nice presentation from the Hunt Committee. And there was a uh special meeting on this last Thursday. And uh, they had a update to uh the Hunt personnel. Had a, uh, was it move the tenant? And uh, there was a grant application aligning the goals, objectives, expenditures uh for this coming year. Uh, that is part of the uh, the Burn Jag Grant. So hopeful for that. Um, let's see, we have a new uh personnel from the Alpena Department. We'll get on the hunt now. So that is, it's moving pretty fast from where we were a couple of months ago to, I'm so excited to see things in motion, yeah.
Uh, one primary thing out of the emergency management meeting last weeks like this. Uh, and it should be around in the city code red is, is the big thing. And uh, it's encouraging a lot of people to sign up for, for notification of, of problems that came about that weren't quite as well covered. There is a meeting to be held this Wednesday at the Howard Mill Conference Room, which is the corn annex building over there at 7:00 P.M. And so they'll give you information like this. They'll show you how to sign up. They may even help you be able to sign up just like this. And so um, I talked to Rach about this and I believe there was going to be something on our website for the cities about this as well as anyplace else we can post it?
It's on our Facebook, but Steve, I don't know. Did, did it get up on the website?
Not yet, but yeah, that's fine.
I was going to take it over to the, to the senior center and any other place. As a matter of fact, it might be uh important enough to pass on to the Paces Director. It's like this to anywhere where the one seniors are, but really whoever in the, in the community can uh use the information, so.
It's, it's my understanding that they will have computers there to help anyone sign. You know, might have an issue doing that on their own, so it's. Anything else?
That's it.
I don't have anything. I have nothing. It's your report.
I have a retirement board committee meeting on my calendar, but at this time I have nothing.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan and we have City Engineer Stephen Schultz to consent.
Thank you. Also. Um, Rick, so at the last council meeting, I presented the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan. Um, and I know that um with Cindy absent, we wanted to wait on the vote on the main part of it. However, we did vote to remove the gravel in the road in order to um, cause to get that done. Then we could start the volleyball courts. Uh, so we did that. Um, I can go over the um slideshow in great detail if you'd like me to again. Or I can hit the high points or I can put up the map and we can just have some discussion on it. And it's up to you guys how you want to push forward.
I'm, I'm fine because you heard it and I, I know the information. So you can put up the map and just.
So this just highlights the um, you know, the main, the main things are the, the parking lot. Uh, we are looking at accessing to the south end of the property, to the leftmost end um there. And that will be a paved parking area for people to park at so they can access the park on the south end um instead of walking all the way from the parking lot. Um, because we, we did hear about some concerns over that. Um, being, you know, not being able to walk that far from the parking lot by the volleyball courts. So that was one of the things we did. Um, the volleyball courts, like I said, they're going in now. We um, uh, those are going well so far. Lots of volunteer labor uh from the volleyball uh group. Um, the existing volleyball courts right now will be turned uh back to a natural beach area. And with the, that's kind of with the help of here on pines. Um, they're also going to help us with deciding on some different plantings um within the park, uh including um uh trees, we're thinking four or five trees, but then also some other just smaller plantings in and around some areas, kind of create like a peaceful space. Um, some of the old stumps are going to be used as like sitting areas or meditation areas, that type of thing. Um, we're going to continue that uh Dune Restoration Project um that's going on right now further south, all the way to the end. Uh, that's working well at so far, so we'll do that. And there will be a fourteen foot wide ADA pathway. It'll be a gravel pathway. Um, and it is, it'll be similar, the gravel will be similar to what is down at the uh Water Street Commons area. That's a different type of aggregate than we use normally. And it's, when it's compacted, it is ADA accessible. I guess that's kind of the high points right now. The, the main parking lot and, and drive through there um is, the intention is to be paved by the fall after the volleyball courts are complete.
Just, anyone have questions?
I, I'm curious, because we've seen this kind of morphed over time out of the plans.
But, but yeah.
How has this changed? It's like kind of like feedback from people.
Um, not a whole, not a whole lot. I mean, it, it, it changed um a little bit based on the, the volleyball court. Uh, the volleyball group wanted the, a little bit of rotation on the, on the courts. They didn't want them necessarily parallel to the water like we had them originally. But other than that, that's really the only thing that is, has changed per se. Um, it, this has always been the intention to kind of start it this way. The, the, one of the bigger things was we had planned in the original plan where there was a large pavilion there set up to be for the farmer's market. They indicated that with the use of the building and the green area, the fields and stuff, they felt that was more of an appropriate usage like that. And so we, we kind of nixed the whole idea that, that pavilion where I've heard some, um, some requests for like smaller pavilions, like a picnic area type thing. So for like one or two families to use at a time instead of a large. Um, and mainly we, you guys are seeing this again is because we're making changes to the original plan. And that was council's wish from the very beginning is, you know, we, we made the plan and you put all those things in it because that's your support for grants. And then when it comes time to do those projects, which we got the grant for the volleyball courts, we were, our direction was to bring it back to council and say, hey, this is what we want to do. This is what we're, how we're looking at doing it and get the, the approval process more of a step by step uh way of doing things and to, to get your, your go ahead on, on those different projects as they, as we build the park.
Or how many volleyball courts were left at the original site?
Um, it was originally six and there was uh like four that were playable um at the time.
So this is more on courts.
This is eight courts.
Broadens the area that it was.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a larger area. And one of the things that they pointed out is they, they grow every year. And then on top of that, they have to split between this location and the apex to play. They have to split their group up sometimes. And so they really wanted to see if they could do the eight courts and we, I mean, we certainly have room for it, so. And they actually, uh, they themselves uh shrunk the whole site up just a little bit. It will, there will actually be more of a, a buffer between the existing play structure and the start of the courts. Because at, when you, when you put all the courts together, you have a 10-foot baseline on one court and a 10-foot baseline on the other court. And we put them together like that. And they said, no, we can share that 10-foot baseline. So they, you know, they kind of pushed them together a little bit like that. So that gives a little bit more green area, a little bit more room for some swing sets, things like that, that we can fit in there, so.
So in a previous rendition, the playground had been moved, if I remember correctly. Um, now is this just going to have updated uh structures? Cause I know I've been down there and some of them are.
Yeah, those, and those are all gone at this point.
I, I thought.
And actually told me that some of them probably can't get reinstalled. We're going to update them. So we're going to put some money upcoming in the CIP to um replace some equipment every year. That's the plan.
Are you talking about the version where it was the, like the play center around the parking lot or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Just wanted to ensure that.
Changed a lot when we, we rotated, when the pavilion went away. And then when we rotated the, the courts, that whole idea of where the play structure was going kind of went.
It was very concerning.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm glad that's, but relocate will stays where it is.
Those blue markings on the parking lot, I still work for handicap parking?
Yeah, I mean, and those are for, just symbolic for right now. You know, we'll strategically place them where we think they should go. But yeah, it's just, I just wanted to get the idea out there that we are placing handicaps tall within that parking.
It's much bigger, it's on my part. I, is there a special ADA uh type of gravel, like a thinner?
It really is, yeah. It's a smaller, yeah, it's a smaller pebble and it, and it, it packs differently. Yeah, no.
Would that go from that smaller parking lot that's uh to the, can I get my, to the? I'm sure how the direction, over there by Thunder Bay Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would there be a pathway going from that parking lot into?
Sure, yeah. It, it would all be joined. The, the idea would be is that we would make the pathway, kind of join up all the existing stuff that we have. Right, you know, go, go past a picnic um area, go past, you know, one of the, the stumps that we're going to, you know, have for meditation. Then wrap around and go, you know, across maybe the whole frontage of that, that parking area. So people have access right away as soon as they come out of the parking area.
So, and we have. So, and we have three motions here. So if somebody wants to make the first one, let me have more discussion.
Move to direct staff to proceed forward with the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan as presented, or move to direct staff to proceed forward with the restoration plan as modified by the discussion.
Second.
Read the whole thing. So Councilman Mitchell made a motion to direct staff to proceed forward with the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan as presented, or move to direct staff to proceed forward with the restoration plan as modified by discussion. But we didn't do.
No modification. Yes, we don't read that part.
But it's his motion.
I gave it up there. Interesting.
So amended, do you want to amend your motion? Yeah, I see. Do you want to modify?
She's a pro.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, good.
Okay. Do you want to?
Amend it just to knock off that, that second part of the motion.
Okay. Carol.
And I second that.
Okay. So Councilman Mitchell made the motion to direct staff to proceed forward with Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan as presented, and it was supported by Mayor Portem. Any discussion?
Did we make any modifications?
Not tonight.
No.
No, that's why.
Okay. So, okay. I just, okay.
Any more discussion?
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Aye.
So we have a second motion. Does someone want to tap that?
Like to move to use twenty thousand dollars of committed restricted funds for the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan as follows. Five thousand for Michigan Kewas upgrades from performance locker, five thousand for shoreline erosion, and ten thousand for park improvements, both of which are from Alpena Area Convention and visitor bureau.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carrier, supported by Collinshead, to move to use twenty thousand dollars of committed restricted funds for the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan as follows. Five thousand for Michigan Kewas upgrades from the performance locker, five thousand for the shoreline erosion, and ten thousand for park improvements, both of which are from Alpena Area Convention and visitor bureau. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
And your third motion?
I move that we approve the attached budget amendment, which carries over unused funding from previous fiscal year to complete the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration project.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Portem, supported by Councilwoman Collinshead, to approve the attached budget amendment, which carries over unused funding from the previous fiscal year to complete the Michigan Kewas conceptual restoration plan. Any discussion? Anna?
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Thank you. Steve, we're still with us. We have, yes, we have the water recycling plant storage building electrical project. Once again, Steve, that's some new business.
So on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, the city received an open bids for the twenty twenty five water recycling plant storage building electrical project. This project includes installing new lights, plugs, and switches at the water recycling plant storage building. This building has never had electrical in it and has been, become difficult to use. Bid documents were sent to ten firms with five bids received, as shown there. After reviewing all the bids, it was noticed that all four of the five, that four of the five contractors bid the project using a one hundred amp service. At the time, we asked Thunder Bay Electric for a clarification on their bid proposal for, and for a bid, including the one hundred, one hundred amp service. We believe that using the one hundred amp service will give the storage building more ability to expand in the future if need be. So they were at thirteen thousand eight eighty four, and this was a request for proposal. So it was however they wanted to design it. And Thunder Bay Electric basically did bare bones. This is what they want. They want four plugs, this many lights, whatever. This is what we're doing. Everybody else bid it with a hundred amp service to allow for that expansion. And so we just asked for a clarification from them as they were the low bidder already. And they were still low after that. So, so they came in at the fifteen thousand twenty two dollars. So there is sufficient funding within the Capitol Building improvements lineup for this purchase. And you see my recommended motion there.
I just have one question, Steve. How come this building's never had electricity?
I think they're using it a little differently. It's just, it's, it was always a cold storage building, and they're finding different uses for it and, and things like that. And they need to, I mean, if you're out there, you need to charge your phone, you need to, you know, see in there. They need to do some repairs to something. That's, they're just using it differently, I think, than what they did before.
Cold storage, you know, who goes into their basement and not, not a light?
Yeah.
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 It's, it's tough.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Okay.
You just stop holding.
It's a big, it's a big garage.
Anyone want to make the motion?
I move that we award the contract for the twenty twenty five water recycling plant storage building electrical project to Thunder Bay Electric in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand and twenty two dollars.
Mayor Portem made a motion, supported by Councilman Carrier, to award the contract for the twenty twenty five water recycling plant storage building electrical project to Thunder Bay Electric in the amount of fifteen thousand twenty two dollars. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Councilmember Mitchell? Aye.
And Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
I'm, we come up to a adjourned a closed session. We're going to discuss A, firefighters' labor union negotiations, B, discuss clerical labor union negotiations, and C, discuss a water and sewer litigation update.
Second? Sorry. You guys.
Just really excited.
No, I just had to adjust. I was not.
Mayor, make the motion, discuss firefighters' labor union negotiations, discuss clerical, discuss water and sewer. You want, you two, read the next part to return to, oh, no, okay. Any discussion?
Councilmember Collins?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Um, we are back in open session. And in regards to collective bargaining and agreement for local number six twenty three of International Association of Firefighters, have a motion. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I move that we approve the terms of the three-year contract between the city of Alpena and the local number six twenty three of the International Association of Firefighters.
Oh, second.
So Mayor Portem has made the motion, and Councilwoman Collins had, has seconded to, to approve the terms of the three-year contract between the city of Alpena and the local number six twenty three of the International Association of Firefighters. Any discussion? Anna?
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
And Councilmember Allison?
Aye.
And she carried.
Thank you. And on B, with potential action against, on the collective bargaining and agreement for the city clerical workers, United Steel Workers, AFL, CIO, Local Two Eleven, you have a motion. Anyone like to make that?
Move to approve the terms of the three-year contract between the city of Alpena and the city clerical workers, United Steel Workers, AFL, CIO, Local Two Eleven.
Second.
So Councilman Mitchell made the motion, supported by Councilman Carrier, to approve the terms of the three-year contract between the city of Alpena and the city clerical workers, United Steel Workers, AFL, CIO, Local Two Eleven. Any discussion? No? Anna?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Walchak?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Thank you. There's no business, further business before this contact. Any change among, on, motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Thank you. You are adjourned.